We really just appreciate all the dedication from our teachers, our staff, our families, our students during a difficult time to really make the best of the bad situation and to really pull out some little positives this year, which is going to give us a great start into next year. As we end this year, looking forward to next year, unfortunately, we're still waiting for guidance from the Illinois State Board of Education to finalize our plan. The State Board is meeting tomorrow night, and we should have an idea soon on what the guidance will be from the state. Once we have that, we'll finalize our plans and bring it to the board. My participation will finalize the plan in June for the board meeting. Obviously, at this point, maybe come from the state would lead us to believe that the vast majority of our students will be in person with the possible exception of medical exemptions. But we'll wait for final clarification from the state before we conform with the plan. And then I also do want to take this opportunity to thank the Kinder County Health Department. You know, we've been adamant that when the state brought us back at three feet for school, but the health department still kept six feet for quarantine, it has a bad situation and frustrating. And last week they changed that. They've never given the opportunity from the State Board of Health to make that change at a local level. They did it, and we really appreciate that, listening to our concerns and follow through, which we really think will be best for our kids. Give us a great way to end this year and a great starting point at the end of the fall. So absolutely appreciative of the Kinder County Health Department and their help keeping our kids in school. My report this week, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item is unfinished business. We have none, we move into our new business, which is the first item of our new business is approval of the 2021 to 2024 agreement between the Board of Education and Council of Teachers.
This is an agreement that was negotiated between the Board of Education through representatives and district administration and Woodstock Council of Teachers of the Kinder County Federation of Teachers. It's a three-year agreement that takes us through the next three school years. Had salary raises of 3.5, 3.4, that arrange, CTE has kind of with a base of three in the third year. We froze stipends in the contract over the three-year period. There was no increase in health benefits. They stayed frozen as well. And we, you know, there was ratified by the union and how we can support your application.
Are there any questions or comments regarding the agreement? Okay, if not, just suggest the motion, I paid 142 of your materials or a board vote.
Move to waive the reading and approve the 2021 to 2024 agreement between the Board of Education, Woodstock School District 200, and Woodstock Council of Teachers and the Kinder County Federation of Teachers, IFT, AFD, AFL-CIO, Local Number 1642.
Well, should I not prepare? Should we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hedley. Roll call, please.
Dr. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Hedley?
Yes.
Dr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mr. Homo?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
And our next item is the discussion of city of Woodstock impact fees.
So the city approached us, you know, and we'll start by making you aware that we have no input on impact fees. They can be imposed on us, they are imposed on us by the city. However, they wanted to look at an aggressive plan that for a two-year moratorium, starting, you know, then maybe for two years for 100 homes in a limited 240 sites they had in Bull Valley Golf Club, Sanctuary, both parts of Sanctuary, Pond of Bull Valley, Fairview Estates, Country Ridge, and a few other spots. But for 100 homes, they would cut the impact fees in half to try to spur development. So basically, what that means for us is currently, you know, three-bedroom home, which those are all subdivisions. We have bigger three-bedroom homes typically. So if you look at that today, we, as a school fee, we collect $3,378. If we were to take half of that, then we take, you know, whatever 16, we lose about $1,600, you know, $615, $50 a home for those 100 homes, if they did that. And they had goodwill, they approached us with the idea that we could bring it back, really discuss it with you. And to put that in perspective, if those 100 homes were built in those subdivisions and they value 350, $400,000, the EAB on that in one year would make up, you know, what we would lose in the impact here. So just to kind of put it all in perspective, we don't get a ton of impact fees to start with, which could be a different conversation for a different day. But again, they're imposed by the city, another formula they use as well, which I believe is driven from the state. And they're talking about cutting it in half, and it's very limited scope in areas that are, these are existing subdivisions where lots still exist, they think of spur development potentially, you know, new homes, which of course, you know, we built out expecting more population, so that would be along with what we've anticipated. And, you know, we'd lose about $1,600 a home for up to 100 homes for two years.
Tom Croupp, you want to comment or?
Yeah, it was a discussion that Mayor Turner initiated between me and Lichen and him and Rossa Stulper. And the emphasis is on trying to spur more growth in the district, in the city of Woodstock. And it's, again, as Mike explained, it's an effort to try and get the subdivisions that are already planted and already ready to go, moving in the direction of having going, going to them. They're looking for, they're not really looking for us to do much other than to discuss them. As far as I understand, they're not looking for us to take any action, but they wanted us to be aware of it and gauge our reaction to it. And as we discussed, as Mike indicated, the biggest benefit does it, it would be a trade-off of half our impact fees in the interest of long-term growth intact in the tax base, which has always been a problem, which has been a problem recently in terms of generating tax for the, generating property tax for the district. So we talked about it and, you know, they wanted us to discuss it and see if they're right with the kind of thoughts. Or if anybody has any concerns about the program, and obviously, there's always a concern when you're cutting an impact fee. But on the other hand, if the result is, you know, positive EAB growth, it may, it's something that's beneficial to us in the long run. So.
There'd be no one caveat I would probably throw in, is that, you know, we make up a small part of the whole portion. We could probably ask the city to cut ours by less than 50 to get to that total number. We can advocate for that, to get some of that back.
They can do whatever they want, right?
Absolutely.
Why aren't we even asking them?
I think just as a sign of goodwill, for us to understand why they want it. So you, it's not just done, I tell you, we've had bigger cuts in the past without even being told, in all honesty. So I think it was just a gesture of goodwill, say, hey, here's why we're doing it. Here's how you understand it at the board. So instead of someone coming to you in the street and saying, hey, your impact fee got slashed. You at least know why and where it's coming from.
Well, I, you know, I, I think that's good for the cities, on the cities' end. And if Lichen's on our end, I really don't feel comfortable giving them a yay or nay either way. Their decision, and I think we should stay out of that and just take what they decide. That's just my thought.
And that's not our point anyway, is it, yay or nay, we're just discussing.
Yeah.
So first of all, I think it's nice on the city's part, and it's smart on the city's part, just to convey that message, so the two governing bodies know what each other's doing. So out of respect for us, I think that was a nice gesture by them, so I start by saying that. How long of a timeframe are we looking at? That was the next question.
Two years.
Just two years, okay.
Two years or until they make the threshold with the 100, which is 100 units.
Yeah, which probably.
So if they.
I'm not going to, I'm not going to.
They made it 100 units in two years.
Yeah, yeah, right, yeah. And it was, they just focused on the upper end level. Mike, was that, was there?
Well, the subdivisions, you know.
Because $350,000 is not an average house in Woodstock.
No, the subdivisions that are built out there, they're a little bit bigger homes. And actually, the average, Brian always has it, what's the average sales price last time we saw it, Brian?
Was that 2, I want to say 245?
Okay, I'm sorry, but okay, so, yeah.
But, yeah, so it was like, yeah, again, for conversation, because that's all we have is conversation. Does that mean our population, you know, I mean, does it, does it affect us that much? Like, yes, I don't even know, I'll be surprised if they could do close to 100 homes in that timeframe. However, I think it's a good attempt at it, and I do regard highly the fact that they did speak with us. Those are my thoughts.
I think every, just briefly, but I think part of the idea is to get something, move, to get something actually happening, not supposed to just, you know, just try and get those lots that have already been set aside for building, getting building happening. I think what some of our, like, most of our, our, that direction.
City of Woodstock, Bull Valley, the two sanctuary condos, Bull Valley, kind of a, you know, far eastern portion of City of Woodstock. And I just want to point out to you, you know, with the TIF stuff, we've been concerned. I'm not concerned about responsible growth at all personally. I mean, I think it's the city's job, but responsibly, I think it's healthy for our community. Residential and TIF is horrible, what the law is intended for, and it's bad for us. But in residential areas outside of TIF, I think, I mean, you know, pro-growth is a good stance for the district. But like, again, we don't have a say in the financial matters of it.
Well, the thing that concerned me the most about that was that the city actually picks the areas that they want to offer it. Why isn't it swamped with anybody who wants to develop in the area? That's, I don't understand it.
I think for this purpose, Bruce, the answer is that these are already, lots of our establishments. They're not, they're not new to residential development. There are some that are already planned to be developed and you haven't talked about, you know. That's what the focus is on that simple, not a new subdivision, not a new subdivision, already established.
Just, you know, Apple Creek's the next big one, we already have a deal out there, existing. So, I mean, we've already, we get something out there on that, but that'd be the next big one.
Right, I'm not, I mean, I think that the growth would be great for us, but I can't, I can't understand how they pick and choose who gets to do that. I don't think, and I'm not going to say that I'm in favor of.
I get it, so it may be the only lots available. I mean, I don't know the plotting off the top of my head, but those may be the only lots available in current subdivisions. So that, we try to think where other than Apple Creek, I don't know where else there would be size of lots available. But I can't, sorry.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? Okay, sure, we'll move on then. Our next item then is our District 200, every student succeeds class division.
All right, so you have a document with you at your table that we'll refer to. The SRF3 federal grant, federal funding provided us with a sizable amount of money, about $5.00 million, we used over three years with a number of caveats. And we really focused on making sure our students were prepared to have success going forward in school, meaning academically, emotionally, all the different impacts that go in there. So this plan presented, it will be on public display for 30 days, and we'll ask you to approve it in June at your meeting. So, but today, if there are any questions, comments, input, anything else you want to see when we bring it back. So again, just, you know, the $5.00 million being spent in the next three school years, which divided by our three levels, so when you look at elementary first, we hired seven interventionists. So those are people that are going to work hands-on in our schools and small group instruction. And we hired seven veteran teachers, and we filled those positions in the classroom with new hires, a combination, a lot of them are people coming from our residence program, in all honesty, we heard about last time. But these are people that are going to work hand-in-hand with our students in the classroom, you know, boots on the ground, additional people to help make sure that we close any gaps, bring kids back to grade level, and then continue to enhance instruction too for students that are at or above grade level. And we want to fund these positions for the next three school years. You know, it does give us that good bridge in literacy and math to really make sure that we're getting kids up to the level they need to be, you know, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade over the next three years. Lots of the continuing one reads for second and third graders, we think our program has been incredibly successful. And we'll have data on it next year for concrete outlooks. And then also, we're going to support fourth and fifth grade students in literacy and math as well. So really, we're, academically, we feel really good with coverage we're going to have for our elementary school with those extra interventions, you know, one in each building that really now allows us to work with kids in a hands-on way, small groups, you know, win time, which again, win impacts everybody, what I need time. So that's kids across the spectrum from below grade level, at grade level, above grade level. And then time for fourth and fifth grade too. So that's kind of, that's a bulk of our academic intervention, you know, at elementary level, which we're really excited about. And classic teachers are excited about that too, because they have extra hands to help the small groups to work in the classrooms. Then we're going to have three additional social workers at elementary level for those three years. They'll be split them on the six buildings. And then, as you're going to see with all our social workers, we're having them on a flex schedule. So sometimes we spend after-school some days to work with students and families outside of the school day. Because we think that's important as we start looking at our students and their needs. Not only getting them to the time we have during the day, but getting some of that time with them after school, with their families after school, really work on issues and support them in a number of different ways. We'll identify students and follow through screening and recommendations. And then look at what we call wraparound services in school, after-school social work groups, you know, monthly, quarterly family education events for all parents and all students, you know, anxiety, topics like that that can impact all students, if people will be able to come to. After-school appointments for families and support families through at-home visits. So we really feel good about that. And the social, emotional needs of kids, really, you know, I think we're just tipping the iceberg with those needs are going to be going forward in the next year. And we think this helps us, you know, create a situation where we're in a position to help more kids, more families, classroom teachers when they have needs in this area across the board the next three school years. And then, we don't know what their remote teaching requirements are going to be, but we have additional staff member ready to go. If for some reason we don't need them, they will offset class size for a year. With this grant money, and then after that, we'll reevaluate. So really, there's no risk. I mean, worst case, we have lower class size at a grade level. But if we do have a size of a lot of students, we want someone to do that, so our classroom teachers aren't doing it again. And, you know, I think that was, you guys, our classroom teachers, one of the big, you know, issues that they had to work with was teaching both sets of students in two different ways, this would alleviate that. And then professional development, you know, part of this too is working on our staff and on our needs. Kristen Sauer's training and trauma-sensitive practices in schools will continue. Kristen will be out again, she's a national author who works with us, and she'll be on site next year, which we're really excited about. Professional development on science and reading with a focus on phonics and phonemic awareness. Instructional coaches to really model best practice instructional on the science of reading. And then expansion assessment interventions, associates, new interventionists, new staff in general. And just thinking, we're going to hit all kinds of different students with this now. You know, trauma, trauma impacts all students. Our phonetic program really thrusts in K2 hits all students. Because we've even found, you get to fourth and fifth grade, you get a kid that's really, you know, 80 percentile in second, third grade, they take a fifth grade dip or a fourth grade dip, it's because their body works strong enough, their comprehension is strong, but not that strong phonetic base. The way I hit, you know, the best lot of words, even the harder reading, they really struggle. So this, this really centering on phonics at the lower levels helps all students across the whole spectrum educationally. And then technology, just continuous form of families with technology that's needed, whether it be remote or, you know, some of the extensions, the things we're going to do. And just the amount of technology we use in the last 14 months has been amazing. Kindergarten, first grade, taking them home, all those changes, you know, George and his staff have done an amazing job. But there's a cost of all of that, the wear and tear of all of it's been great. So replacing that, making sure we can stay up and running with technology. Any questions on our elementary school plan or comments? We'll take them kind of as we go. Then middle school, a blended math intervention. This is additional time will be added to the day for a math teacher at each grade level of each school. It'll be used to create a blended math intervention at each grade level. And here with the blended programs, these are kids that have short ability in the past, but during COVID have dropped below grade level, the grades or her assessments. So this is a kid that we know has the ability to do it, that's fallen behind. And here, this intervention is going to be in one per grade level. We're really going to work with them not only on front- learning skills, reviewing skills, but also working through on, you know, the work they're doing in class too. So, you know, getting both, both the skill and a practical approach in the classroom. It'll take place before or after school, meets needs of students that are identified. And the nice thing about that is we're not taking them out of other classes, because in the middle school, high school level, interventions become really hard. If you're taking a kid out of class at some point, in many cases, and that, that's tough to do. Students will be identified before using state and local assessment data from years prior to the pandemic, this spring, and then the start of the school year as well. Students and parents will be notified in the fall, the option for blended math. The blended option will allow students to stay in all current classes, will allow for flexibility for after-school. Again, that means students that really have fallen in flight at the low grade level. We also have Math 180 for students that are considerably below grade level. And then we also have the skills lab for kids that are at or above grade level in middle school. So again, reaching all levels there in math. And then after-school tutoring, the ability to build a tutoring plan. Looking, we have a real successful ABIT tutoring plan, we'll take some of the components there, it won't be the exact same, but some of the components we've been successful there with, to build and offer to all students in literacy and math at the middle school level, after-school, if possible, provide transportation, we will run it for sure until we get up and running this school year.
Was that there, Bruce, sir?
Absolutely.
Um, I appreciate the, going back to, let me get your first name, the blended math intervention. Yep, blended math intervention focuses upon students who have dropped below grade levels during the pandemic. And I'm sure there are a lot of students who have dropped below grade levels during the pandemic. And I'm also sure there are a lot of students who were above grade level that were somewhat stymied by the fact that they were working from home and maybe didn't progress as well as they could have had they been in an in-person environment. Doesn't look like much is being done in either the middle schools or any elementary schools for students who maybe were above, above.
So.
A little bit advanced, but now being only because of the fact.
Well, at the elementary level, the wind time does that, because what I need, again, that's individualized for everybody. And the extra interventionist allows for an extra pair of hands at wind time. So that directly impacts our students both at and above grade level. At the middle school, we talked about that last slide, maybe I went through it too quick. We have skill labs that already exist, and that's our opportunity, those kids that are at or above grade level in math through the skills lab, because, you know, now we've got every level of intervention in math at the middle school. We've got Math 180 for kids that are below grade level. We've now got intervention blended for kids that are, we know at the ability level, that are falling behind. Then we also have the skill labs that exist for students that are at or above grade level. So that exists for those students. And again, tutoring also, depending on the student, could be available for kids that are at or above grade level as well. Because, you know, our ABIT tutoring actually is based more on working with kids that don't necessarily have huge deficits, but they can be pushed ahead, pushed farther. So the concept that we're basing it off of exists to help kids like that also.
Mike, could you clarify for me, additional time to be added to the day for a math teacher? Is that, so a teacher will be going through an overload?
Yeah, overload, yeah, overload. Yeah, we looked at, so at the high school, we hired a teacher to help do it, but, you know, it is going to help a different. At the middle school, we didn't think it made sense, and you can't hire one for both because of the time constraints. So we don't want overloads there. And we looked at it both ways. And again, after the first year job, we may see one works better than the other and do that the next year, you know what I mean?
Okay, so that's where the flexibility comes in, huh?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, it's a great question though, and we went back and forth on that. Also hiring math teachers after, like, last January, it becomes a little more difficult. So we did hire a couple of great ones recently in the high school, but, you know, we thought the overload was probably the way to go. But we'll have to reevaluate it each year to see, you know, it should be a full-time FTE, and if so, how would that look like?
And we've got solid teachers in those schools who will take the overload?
Yeah, absolutely.
We get personnel is crucial, you know, how.
Yeah, I mean, these plans only going to be good staff doing, you know?
Yes.
That's another part, you know, with a blended approach, you almost need a veteran teacher to do it, because there's a lot of nuance there of, you know, how do you use that time? How do you motivate the kids? How do you, how do you do this? It's a very unique program we're going with, right? Of not just remediation, but working with kids that have the ability and getting them back over the hump. So we felt like the veteran teachers were needed to get that type of intervention going.
Excellent.
All right, additional social worker at each middle school. Again, going for the social, emotional needs and support that we think are going to be incredibly important. We're going to hire additional social worker each in the two middle schools. Again, on the flex schedule again, so that we can work with them, work with families. They can run after-school groups, they can run parent interventions, you know, we said quarterly, it could be monthly, whenever it worked out to be. Home visit, and evening appointments with families to try to reach all kinds of different levels of students and families with social, emotional support. And then, you know, again, remote learning staff. Another thing on this position is, you know, we've got someone here that's going to help with remote learning. If it pivots away from that, we then, we then look back at our high school kids or middle school kids that are falling behind, credit deficiencies, areas like that, and then pick them up. And then really look at closing the gaps we have there. You know, we have more apps than we want, and both, you know, Nor, doesn't have everybody app ever, but they have more than they typically have. But still, you know, closing some of those gaps we have with freshmen or sophomores and it looks junior and senior year in high school. So we're going to keep that person busy in a variety of ways. And again, technology, using, you know, refurbishing what we need for George and his staff and the tools we've used over the last 14 months. Any questions on middle school?
Is there a requirement to use some sort of data to show that system?
No, I mean, everything we do, we keep it on.
I just, just.
Yeah, no.
If the mind.
No, you have to show that you spent X, a certain percentage on student achievement, closing that, the learning gap. But we exceeded that probably. But of course, we track it internally, and we'll share with you, but the federal government doesn't currently have anything with that. All right, now the math intervention at the high school is a little bit different. Of, here we did hire additional FTE to help make it work. And here we're going to focus really on algebra one, algebra two, because algebra is kind of a language of math. You got your freshmen coming in in eighth grade, maybe have a rough experience, kids that, you know, we helped identify these kids that we knew at some point, you know, fifth grade, sixth grade, maybe seventh grade, you know, at or above grade level on assessments and work, and now are falling behind. We're going to identify them, help get them back over the top. You know, here you're talking about really relevant, okay, looking at, you know, SAT and being able to get back on track. The score is going to give you college opportunities. So very relevant work here, on the same way, really look at that skill level that we're building up and then also pre-teaching and working with, the work you're doing in class as well, to keep an even keel there. This also allows us to keep class sizes appropriate, you know, at three feet apart is the biggest problem we had there, probably at the high school level. So this allows us to, with additional FTE, make sure we keep that spacing. And then also be allowed to work with kids that are above or at grade level in smaller group instruction as well. After-school tutoring for all students in core academic subjects. Again, building a tutoring plan available to students that need it. These could be kids that have grade level below, that need a lot of help to get back to where they, or to get where they want to be going forward. If you start talking about high school, you start talking about goal setting, and where do you want to be? Where, you know, what type of school do you want to go to, and that whole environment. Then a social worker in each high school to help support, again, with the flex schedule, home visits, parent engagement, after-school activity. Then professional development, again, trauma-sensitive, trauma-sensitive school training, a coaching model for apartment chairs, allowing them to get in the classroom, really help support teachers in a different way, small group instruction, and continue to require PLCs. And again, the remote learning to wherever extent it exists. And then a continued support of technology, so that's our plan. Any questions at the high school level?
Any questions at the high school or any other?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, so one more question. With respect to engaging, getting students engaged in it, you did mention that some of that will be done by teacher identification of students. Will there be an opportunity for students who wish to connect with somebody?
To tutoring, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it. Yeah, I mean, there will be an opportunity for students to engage it if they want to.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, the tutoring is open to all students, yeah. What do you mean, we have to start parsing out what that looks like and, you know, signing up high time, something like that, but yeah, it's available to all students, yeah. We try to hit a little bit of everybody with the plan at that level.
All right, any other questions or comments?
Anything else you want to see when we bring it back for approval?
This will be kept, that are being for, and for implemented in the upcoming year, correct?
Yes.
Do you have anything you want to add or? All right, we have a couple of weeks before they have to put it together, way to file version, if you do have questions.
Let us know.
Dr. Moyn is always open to those things, so if you have a question or if it's anything I want to talk about privately, that's possible as well. All right, great, thank you for your presentation, and for the harbor for giving this very detail. Okay, that leads us to our last item on our new business, which is approval of a resolution to repair a portion of Woodstock art access.
Okay, so during the weekend of April twenty-fourth, we had significant winds, winds, and it caused damage to the Woodstock North High School pool roof and the classroom wing roof adjacent to the pool. We've done temporary repairs, and we called our insurance company to come up and take a look. And they have agreed that this is an insurable repair. They asked us to get three proposals from roofers, and then they will contract with the, with the builder, and we are only responsible for the twenty-five hundred dollar deductible. But in order to expedite the repair work and prevent further damage to the school, the Illinois School Code allows us to declare this an emergency purchase or expenditure, and then we don't have to do the bidding process, if we did the bidding process, we could do the June or maybe possibly the July board meeting. And we don't want to wait that long, so our regional council prepared the resolution, but it says it needs three quarters of the board, I'm not sure what we're going to do there.
Take a vote tonight, and we'll talk to our lawyers.
I mean, is that three, four quarters of the voting, or three quarters of the vote, but three quarters of the vote, you wouldn't ask for a vote then, no?
Yeah, I think we should approve it, we'll talk to our lawyers.
Right. First of all, does anybody have any questions or comments about the proposed repair?
I do, will we have any input after the, did they receive with the insurance company?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments or concerns? All right, if not, there's a suggestion motion on page one eighty-one. Our materials are on board.
Move the weight and the reading on the crew, the resolution to repair a portion of the Woodstock North High School roof.
I'll tell you, Mr. Humble, do we have a second?
Second.
Second one, Dr. Ferris, roll call, please.
Mr. Humble?
Yes.
Dr. Ferris?
Yes.
Dr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mr. Headley?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmar?
Yes.
Okay, hopefully that's a time of nothing, hopefully that's efficient. All right, that's all of our new business. Have any committees messaged their last meeting, or have any committees updated their reports? We had a calendar committee meeting last week, it's been, it's been a while. No, that looks like the, the calendar's canceled. All right, so that'll be coming, you know, committee meetings. Okay, now, I'm entertaining a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Ferris, seconded by, by Dr. Bidwell, roll call, please.
Dr. Ferris?
Yes.
Dr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mr. Humble?
Yes.
Mr. Headley?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmar?
Yes.